So with that said, that's, this is us and discussion on the two discussion items. Let me recognize the Mayor Protem.
Good morning. I'm gonna speak to sort of the second item, which is increasing density on the corridors in that conversation. Last year, as a council, we committed to try to move forward with items that were of consensus in terms of how we could meet the need for additional housing. Over the course of the last year or so, we've moved forward with several proposals, which are in various stages of being implemented. The mayor and I put forward a proposal, and frankly, I can't remember all the cosponsors of everything, because it's nice, because they're all mixed up, but the mayor and I put forward a proposal to allow for residential in commercial areas with an affordability bonus. Councilmember Tovo put forward a resolution to facilitate additional ADUs. Councilmember Hyper Madison put forward a resolution creating equitable transit-oriented districts. Councilmember Kitchen put forward resolutions related to VMU, and I'm sure there are others. I know we've had a bunch of stuff up in the domain that Councilmember Poole has led on, and I'm sure there are a number of other items that we've talked about. From those, it's clear that we can work together to advance some meaningful change. Back in April, we kind of challenged ourselves to think about the question slightly differently than we had been and ask ourselves, how would we, you know, what could we do if we wanted to increase density on the corridors, limiting ourselves to the corridors in terms of the goal and the scope of what we were doing? What would be the levers that we have, and how would we go about that? And to have that discussion, we proposed kind of trying to talk with folks that we maybe hadn't been talking with as regularly and as deeply through the Land Development Code rewrite, so that we could hear some different perspectives and think through some issues and better see where we could come to consensus. I guess that was chiming in for consensus. Great. So I worked with a group that had five council members that represented Austinites, North, South, East, and West, and that is a group that is, I'm gonna do the convention of being in boards and commission using first names, Steve, Paige, Leslie, and Vanessa, and myself. And we have some ideas or options or proposal, however you want to stylize it, that is limited to our corridors, where we've all long identified that we want to target growth. We don't have it all fully agreed on in terms of a written form, but we're hoping to have a written version by the end of today. There are just a few more pieces that we want to make sure everyone's on board with before we present it, but the goal is today or tomorrow to have something in writing, and I think we are posted to have the conversation again on Thursday. I want to thank our staff, my chief of staff Kurt Kedena Mitchell, Stephanie Trin, Julie Montgomery, and Sarah and Sophia in the, Sarah and Sophia in the other offices. Our staff worked really, Luisa, yes, thank you, and Luisa, in Councilmember Poole's office. Our staff worked really, really hard over the course of the last month and a half to help us have a conversation that focused on where we had consensus. And I was asked to speak on behalf of this group. Folks will chime in to add pieces as we go. We may not get into every detail, because we're still working things out, but I also want to acknowledge the work of other council members. I'm just gonna speak to what, to what we've come forward with, but a lot of this is informed over many conversations over many years that we've had as a community, and I think folks will see a lot of echoes of what the Planning Commission had proposed with respect to compatibility, their working group many years ago. So the basic idea was, if you want to add density to corridors and limit yourself to the corridors, the first step is to define what is a corridor, and to understand that maybe not every corridor is created equally. And so what we've done is, we have tried to create a way to categorize our corridors, and then to relax compatibility in parking, depending on what type of corridor we're talking about, with the most impactful changes being tied to onsite affordability. So what we have done, recognizing that not all corridors are equal, which is something that we heard a lot from the community and amongst ourselves, we identified two categories, and they're not exactly very original names, but we called them the larger corridors and the medium corridors for growth. And in the larger corridor group, we put highways, so highways like I-35 and MOPAC, which is essentially AS and P level five, our Project Connect rail lines, which are current and proposed, and our existing Metro Rapid routes. And so those are the things that are, you know, are highways, and then Project Connect, whereas a community, we've identified this is where we want our density to be. Then our medium corridors, we put Imagine Austin corridors and our 2016 Bond Corridor Construction Program. And so the medium and larger together is smaller than the Transit Priority Network approach, so it's really focusing on our larger and medium corridors. This proposal does not, or the set of ideas that we want feedback on, does not propose changes anywhere other than on these two types of corridors, and this change is limited to the parcel on the corridor. It does not relax compatibility for any parcel that is not on the corridor itself, so only the corridor parcel itself is granted the increase in entitlement. Of these corridors, it is only, the larger part of the compatibility change is only for residential and mixed-use projects that participate in City of Austin affordability programs. Smart housing fee waivers would not be an example of that. Okay, so again, we've said we have our larger and our medium. Our larger are the things that we've all, over the many years, agreed on, are through votes, through everything. These are the places that we all agree we want the highest density. This is where we'll be most supportive of our transit. On those, if you participate in the onsite affordable programs, you would be able to reach a height of 60 or 65 at 100 feet from single-family zoning. So in the highest density, the larger corridors, we would allow for one to reach 60, 65 at 100 feet from single-family. For the medium corridors, it would be 60, 65 feet of height at 150 feet from single-family zoning. So we are allowing there to be variation across different types of corridors, so the changes that would be coming are possible, would vary thus by context, but in a way that we are able to talk about things. The proposal would also allow you to achieve 90 feet sooner, but I want everyone to remember that under today's code, most zoning districts do not allow for more than 60 feet of height, so by and large, the 90 feet of height only becomes possible if you apply for a zoning change. So for the larger corridors, we're talking about 90 feet of height at 200 feet from single-family zoning, and the smaller corridors would be, or the medium corridors would be 90 feet of height at 250 feet. And again, we will have a proposal that you can read and look at, but I wanted to give you sort of a sense of that, of what we were, of what we would be doing. Again, I want to repeat that most zoning districts today would not allow anyone to achieve more than 60 feet of height regardless of compatibility. So the first part is compatibility and tying that to affordability for changes to where you can do 60 or 65 feet, or 90 or 95 feet. We have some other tweaks to compatibility that we would say on these corridors you get automatically. I'm gonna wait on introducing those either till later or when we have our proposal come out. The second area we looked at were parking requirements, and here, I think we had slightly less, like clarity on which number, although we broadly agreed that we should be reducing parking more in the larger corridors and substantially, and also reducing it on the medium corridors. And we would do that with maintaining existing parking requirements near our schools, and we would provide direction to explore options to main safety around schools while collaborating with our school districts on options for campus parking on the public street. I believe that the proposal, and there are the other pieces, and I don't know if you want me to go into those other pieces as well. I believe this is a reasonable and responsible approach. I will talk really briefly about some of the compatibility things that we thought might be things that we could consensuously move forward with, again, only on the medium and larger corridors, and those are things that we thought we could do. So for instance, we thought that we would think differently about the triggers for properties on corridors of what would trigger compatibility. So we would only allow properties on the same side of the corridor to trigger compatibility, as opposed to across the street on the other side of the corridor. We would only allow zoning, as opposed to the use of the property, to trigger compatibility. And again, these are only on the medium and larger corridors. We would cap compatibility for all properties on the medium and larger corridors at 300 feet distance. And then, one of the things that we were trying to solve for was this notion of how you get incremental density and changes that we have observed in the heights of floors since the Land Development Code was passed. So we proposed that we would change by five feet the height limits for residential and mixed-use properties on the corridors, increasing from 30 feet height, increasing 30 feet height limits to 35 feet, increasing 40 feet height limits to 45 feet, and increasing 60-foot heights to 65-feet heights. Then we have, want to discuss the setbacks that happened within that 25, like what could happen in the 25-foot setback, not, we wouldn't want dumpsters to be put there, but we were willing to have a conversation with planners about what we might do in those setbacks. I think that covers pretty much everything. I want to sort of reiterate, you know, the goal was, you know, what levers do we have to increase density on the corridors, limiting it, you know, to the corridors, and how would we go about that in ways that we could have a large comfort level across the community, across the dais for exploring? In setting up what was larger, what was medium, we chose to use existing categories that allowed us to do something less than what was proposed when we were trying to use the Transit Priority Networks. We avoided saying this street versus that street. We were advised by legal not to say we're going to, you know, exclude X Street or Y Street, but that we needed to have categories that we could plan things. That does mean that there may be a few streets that we're struggling, that we may struggle with when we get the full breadth of everyone's ideas here, and we may need to think about if there's ways to address those concerns. But broadly, we are recognizing that we have corridors where we want to see higher density. Not every corridor is the same, and we tried to do this in as simple a way as possible so that we could provide direction moving forward to our staff to allow for these changes without it taking, you know, years to happen. So I think I will leave it there, and again, I want to thank our staff, Luisa, Kurt, Stephanie, Julie, Sophia, and Sarah, who worked on it, and my, and Luisa, I said Luisa first. I said Luisa first. And thank them all for their hard work, and my colleagues who were open to having these conversations. I think as a council, when we focus on, you know, really on the problem and are able to have the conversations and hear from one another about what our concerns are, what the dynamics are in our particular districts, what we know from many, many conversations we've had across the city over the years, I think we can, we can get to results that can move the needle on the things that we all agree on.
Allison, I appreciate that. I'll come right back to you, Pio, if I can. I want to reiterate the thanks to the staff, because they worked really hard on this, the staff in all these offices, but I want to also speak a little bit more broadly than that, because I think that everybody sitting around this table will recognize all of the elements that were just discussed. They're not new, and they're not things we haven't already talked about before, so I think any one of us could claim ownership over any one of more of these things. It's more of a compilation of where it looked like there might have been overlap. But to Allison's point, we've never really focused on having the conversation in really specific terms on where consensus might be. It's just not the process that we had through the years, so the thought of having a different kind of conversation is something that this council said it wanted to do, going back to like last November, when we were talking about it, and I'm encouraged at the prospect of that. And I know that that means that there'll be advocates in the community that have really good arguments for doing significantly more in either direction than what is set out here, and I acknowledge that and understand that, and in some of those instances, I am a believer of that. But that's not the conversation that we're trying to have here. We're trying to have a very different kind of conversation. That also doesn't make this any easier for us, because the way we just laid it out, by definition, we're not going to make everybody happy, and there'll be a significant number of people that aren't happy. But we have such a huge affordability issue on housing in the city. We have to be trying to pull every lever that is available to us. This work by itself will not fix affordability, but no one lever will. But we have, I think, a duty and an obligation, and this council has indicated a desire to pull as many levers as we can. I think you laid that real well. I join you, Allison, in committing to this group that we'll try to have something posted up on the board today, maybe posted in backup for Thursday for the community to be able to see for the discussion, where we think, having listened and participated with everybody, where those points might be for us to perhaps be able to come together. I think you did a really good job of laying it out. Hopefully, we'll be able to complete some of those holes that had a little bit more definition or tighter range in some of the areas to be able to spark the conversation and indicate where we think the consensus might be, because I think that would be something that would be helpful to the community generally, and I'm confident we'll be able to get there. And I know legal has told us, don't base this on roads, base this on categories, and we've tried to do that. I will just throw out there that my reading of these categories mean that a lot of the roads that historically have caused us to kind of get paused, I do not read these categories to include in either the larger or the medium ones. Streets like 45th and Canig and Speedway, when I look at the categories, I don't see those roads being included in what we're doing today. And I think that trying to get to that place where we were not going back and having the old conversations that we had that stopped us is a big part of this. So I appreciate the way that you laid it out, and again, while there's a smaller group moving this forward, this could have been any and all of us, I think, based on the conversations that we've been, been having. So thanks, Pio, and then Anne.
Thank you, Mary. You know, this is, I mean, to me, I'm gonna support it, but it's not what I think that we should be doing. I think we should even expand it more. I told the council years back that if we don't do anything on code next, you're gonna make my property worth a million dollars, and it's worth a million dollars now. I had a neighbor that just sold down the street, couldn't afford his taxes, and sold his house for $1.2 million. And let me tell you, when we bought into those houses, we were paying $21,000 to $35,000. So y'all making us a lot of, a lot of money by not doing anything, so congratulations.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. I really appreciate all the effort that everyone is putting into this. It's very much appreciated, the conversations that people are having. It will take me a bit to, you know, to analyze this with regard to the city, because on first blush of the, I would have to say that it's certainly in the ballpark, and it might be right there with regard to the distances, so I appreciate y'all thinking about that. It appears to be, if I'm understanding correctly, I mean, there's a lot of details also, but if I'm understanding correctly, it appears to be compatible or with the VMU resolution that I brought and that I'm gonna continue with, with regard to opportunities for increased affordable housing along some of these quarters. So I appreciate that. I'll do some more analysis. What's given me a little bit of pause that is different than what we've talked about before is, if I'm hearing you correctly, is the quarters that you're talking about, because these quarters don't align with the transit quarters. And so if I heard you correctly, that may be okay, it's just new. I mean, you've talked about the, if I heard you correctly, you talked about the medium quarters being the quarters that were part of our corridor program, if I heard that correct? Well, that includes Slaughter and William Cannon, neither of which are on a transit quarter, and so, and neither of which have we talked about, and neither, you know, neither of which have much in the way of VMU. So I'm gonna have to think about what the impact is along those. There's homes right up to the, right up to the street on those. And again, that may be fine, it's just I've never heard those two talked about with regard to this before. The other thing I wanted to ask about is, I'm not sure if I heard you in regard to the, in regard to the main, the larger ones, did you say BRT, or did you say existing BRT? And what's the thinking there? And the reason I ask is, I think, I think the transit, for me, the transit quarters are the key, that we want to make sure we cover transit quarters, but the transit quarters are the Project Connect map. So it may be that we cover more than that, but I would think that we at least need to do that. So I'm trying to understand the relationship between what you said and the Project Connect quarters.
Was it BRT, or was it Metro Rapid? Because I think there's-
Yeah, that's what I was asking, so.
Quite a difference, but.
Yeah, but you would want to do BRT. Why would you do a Metro Rapid and not BRT? Because BRT is what Project Connect is for, you know, so.
I think it's a possibility to include.
Well, from my perspective, it makes no sense to not include our Project Connect quarters as our main quarters, particularly if we're gonna include the city's quarters. So that would mean that the new BRT lines should be included.
I have asked for our staff to give us the maps-
Okay.
-that show where all of these particular, specific corridors are in existence today. That's right. And then we can see where the overlap is, we can see if there are any gaps, we can see what is included or not, and should be or should not be.
Okay.
And so this is the opening piece-
Sure.
And yes, we have to have, and I think this is where you may be headed with your comments, we have to see what the maps are in order to make sure that we are covering everything.
Yeah, and I, you know, earlier this morning, we sent out the materials we developed for last night for the program that we have, which you all are welcome to use some good information about, you know, VMU and compatibility, but it also has the Project Connect map in it, so y'all should all have that. And so that's, did you say BRTs, or did you say?
So I said Metro Rapid, but I think we meant, like, the bus rapid transits that are built, was meant to be the Project Connect things. I think that when we went through lots of iterations-
Okay.
I think somebody just forgot that Metro Rapid and BRT were not the same thing, and so I think the intention was for it to be BRT ones that are, you know, are within the Project Connect first phase being built out.
And I just want to add here that this isn't us and others.
No, 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 I got it.
This is supposed to be a conversation for all of us, which is why we are bringing it here today, to get those kinds of questions, because when we present this and request the input from our communities, we need to have a very expansive look at how we describe and explain what it is we're trying to do and take in the information, so that we can continue to find that center lane, that compromise and consensus for all of us on the dais, so that we hopefully have an end product that we all support and vote for.
Yeah, could we start by just, you know, there were a tremendous number of details, and I'm getting lots of questions about, you know, how this impacts some of the areas that were highly contentious last time. Could you please go through the description again of medium and large corridors?
Sure.
And it would be helpful if you would talk a little bit more slowly about what you are proposing be in and out, and it would also be helpful if you could maybe hit on some of, like, streets like Exposition, Enfield, Duval, the ones we heard again and again, if you have a sense of where, whether those are falling within this plan. So, but if you could just lay out, as you did first, but more slowly, which quarters you're addressing. And I think as another point, there's also been confusion in the community and was articulated last night about whether this conversation regarding compatibility is talking about with regard to VMU, or if this is a more general conversation. Are we talking now about compatibility with any zoning on the corridors? Or are we talking about areas where it is strictly VMU, and we are, and it's prompted by the conversation about VMU2? So maybe if we could start with the second question, and then if you could define the corridors.
Okay, Natasha, we'll get to you in one second. Let's respond to this question, then we'll come back to you.
Well, Chair, if I may, it's directly in relation to that question. I'm trying my best to follow along, but we've had at least four of my colleagues speak without having been recognized. I'm wanting to make sure I follow along very closely.
Sure.
So I'd just like to encourage everybody to go through the proper channels and be recognized before you speak, so I can know who's saying what and when.
Okay. McKinsey?
Yeah, I just wanted to say real quick, thank you, Councilmember Tovo, for raising that point. I find myself taking lots of notes here, but without a document in front of me, it is very difficult to follow, and so I'm looking forward to that document coming out, so that we can review it and talk with people in the community about these things. Thank you.
And I promise we'll get the document up. We wanted to have this conversation before we published a document, in case we were already seeing a different consensus or questions were being answered, so that we publish something, it wouldn't make mistakes that we would send people down rabbit holes with. But we will get that document published just real, real, real quickly. And I want to get back to the answers to Councilmember Tovo's question. Before we do that, Chair?
Just a couple of initial questions that come to mind. The first being about the, for example, when staff did the analysis on Councilmember Kitchen's proposal, they came back and they identified that the changes, the VMU2, because of compatibility restrictions, would only affect about, you know, 30%, 35% or so of the properties along the corridors. And I think it's important that we not just arbitrarily pick numbers out of the air, but that we understand- but that we understand, you know, what we're doing. You know, like, for example, on the, the medium-sized corridors that are 200-foot compatibility, how many properties does that actually open up? How many properties are actually gonna be able to take advantage of it? I, I, I think that's a, a critical component of understanding it. You know, I don't wanna pass something and then, you know, again, a, some small fraction, only a small fraction of the, of the properties would be eligible. So, I, I think we really need, I know I've been in communication with the, the city manager and the assistant city manager regarding these, that type of analysis, but. And then the other one would be, uh, the, the another question that just comes to mind right away is the timeline. We have a proposal ready to go. We have, you know, a housing crisis that is just, you know, frothing and, and boiling every day. I very much appreciate the ideas, but I do think that in the very short term, we need to take action on Councilmember Kitchen's proposal and, and move that forward. And then I, 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 I think it would be great to also look at some of the additional corridors, some of the additional items that, that the mayor pro temp was, was just laying out. But that, that would be my other question. What's the timeline on, on, on this kind of proposal? Are we talking about kind of sending it to staff and then coming back? And then, you know, or are we talking about just kind of amending it, amending the VMU, the, the Councilmember Kitchen?
Leslie?
Well, I wanna make sure that we keep these things separate. Councilmember Kitchen has, as we know, her VMU2 proposal, but what we are talking about today is specifically and only compatibility. Now, that does apply in some instances to VMU2, but more broadly, or if you may, if I may, sliced more narrowly, thinly, we are only just talking about compatibility for residential on the corridors, on our major corridors. And I'm remembering back a few years when we were talking about Code Next, it was a different council configuration, but we had significant agreement on increased density for residential along our major corridors. And I see this as, in some ways, a return to that agreement that we had then and reaching back and bringing that forward to have the conversation here and, and to, to start the wheels turning to make it happen. As with all things public policy related, we value and look for the community's input. That takes time, Councilmember Vella, and that's because we are responsible for educating folks and, and making sure that our approaches are crystal clear and that we understand completely what the community wants as well. And then we fashion that, that consensus compromise position before we vote on things. So, by its very definition, I've found in, in, over the years, that these things for them to have good outcomes do take the time. And I think all of us are patient. We recognize the urgency, but we also recognize that we don't want to, what is it, you act in haste and repent at your leisure. We don't want to be in that sort of a posture.
I think the, yeah, I think I agree with that. And I think the way we had set that up, Chita, was we would be acting on the VMU item because that has been, already been initiated. It's gone through the process. It is now back to us, and we're in a position to, to consider and vote on an ordinance. The other goal was that in June, hopefully on June 9th, if there are other ideas that, that we think are, are worthy, we would then initiate those on June 9th with the goal of having the staff take it through the process, through the planning commission process the same kind of way, bring that back to us maybe in September after it's gone through that process so that we can act on the broader agenda as well. But no, this broader work would not slow down the VMU. That would still continue, cause that's gone through the process. But June, we may initiate further ordinances to, to come back to us after we had a chance to go through the process. Okay, I wanna return to, to Kathy's other questions. And, and any one of the five of us could, could speak on this, but to you, to, to the question that you raised, I do not read the categories that we have to include exposition or Enfield.
Could we go through, could you describe the two categories first? And then, and then hit.
So, so the larger category were ASMP Level 5 Streets, which are basically highways. All right, and then the Project Connect Light Rail?
I'm trying to take this.
I'm sorry.
The larger category is.
Could you turn your mic on? Sorry, I think our colleagues can't hear that.
My apologies, thank you. I was asking the mayor if he could. So, let's start with large, and if you could talk about what are in there.
ASMP Level 5 Streets, which I understand are mostly highways. Project Connect rail lines and the future connect, uh, uh, extensions of those rail lines, which until the rail line is in place is going to have much more frequent transit service as those, to support development and, and change in culture and mobility habits. Third category, we had Metro Rapid routes. And Councilmember Kitchen, I could be wrong, but I just didn't remember seeing BRT lines on the Project Connect maps labeled that way. So, we were looking, it would look to be major Metro Rapid routes, which is how I think it was labeled on the map, but the intent was to pick up the BRT lines. So, if we got that wrong, we just got that wrong, but that was the, the intent.
Okay, can I ask a quick question about that? So, the, the, that makes sense, and you're right. I've been calling them BRT, but they're labeled on the map as, as Metro Rapid. That includes the goal line, the enhanced Metro Rapid routes, and the potential future extensions. So, that includes Pleasant Valley, Menchaca, and then the route out to Oak Hill.
Well, we, in this one, we had suggested that it would be the Metro Rapid, the, the Metro Rapid routes, but we had said excluding future expansions because we weren't sure of the deadline, but that, we're just throwing that out. I mean, the, 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 one of the purposes of this is to support, potentially. I mean, I'm, we have to talk through that. I mean, obviously, the goal here is to support as much of the transit activity as we can in the city without running afoul of, of roads or streets that are going to, to gum us up in a way that stops us from being able to move forward. So, we're gonna have to figure out where that right balance point is.
Well, the reason I'm asking is it's important to look at the whole city. And some of the west areas are coming out later. And so, I don't want us to end up not focusing on, if we only focus on today and we don't focus on the full picture of Project Connect, then we're missing our future opportunities. And transit is one of the things that is most important for us to build along. So, I just, that's, that's why I'm asking that question. And at the end of the day, I'm also gonna ask what parts of the, what part of the city are we covering with this? But today, I'm just going to look at this.
And, and I agree with what you said. Let's see if we can get consensus on that.
Well, particularly since the 2016 Bond Corridors are not transit corridors. That doesn't mean they shouldn't be included. I'm just saying that that's new for us to be talking about those areas. And some of the Imagine Austin corridors too are not. So, I just have to go back and look at maps and think about that. I wanna make sure we're covering the whole city and not just certain parts of the city.
Right, and, and if we get the consensus, I'm, I'm with you 1,000%.
Well, I mean, I think part of our consensus needs to be that we're thinking of the whole city.
I, I don't disagree with that. I don't know if the camera can get on this whiteboard that, um, I don't know who points the camera if it can ever move or if that's a fixed frame thing, but over my left shoulder.
So, you can't see it?
Can't see it? All right.
Can't see it.
We'll be posting it soon today, and we'll get it up so people can, can, can see it. But let me finish reading this, and then I'm gonna come to Paige. But in the larger group, we had the ASMP Level 5, the Project Connect Light Rail lines and future expansions, and the Project Connect Metro Rapid, um, excluding future expansions. And that was intended to be BRT. Just looked like it was labeled that way on the Project Connect maps. And then we also.
And if I could just add, it was excluding the ones that were not funded in the first phase.
Well, the reason, but, but we're, but we're keeping rail that's not funded in the first phase.
That was just where we landed. We can have a, have a, have a discussion over that.
All right, and then, and then we also had exploring adding TOD developments and regulating plans.
The larger?
Similar to larger corridors. Weren't sure about that. Would need to actually really understand that. I think a lot of the TODs already have specialized rules that might actually be less restrictive than what we're proposing here, in which case we wouldn't be taking those and trying to make them more restrictive. So, we just said, hey, let's just take a, we, we made a note or a flag. Let's take a look at that and see what that interplay might be. And then on the medium-sized corridors, we had Imagine Austin corridors that have been constructed. And we had the 2016 Bond Corridor Construction Program corridors.
And if I can just clarify, so we found that in Imagine Austin up north, there were a few roads that were in the Imagine Austin map that had never been constructed. So, we wanted to exclude those, those imaginary roads, those imaginary, Imagine Austin roads we wanted to exclude. And then it was my understanding that the Bond corridors were all Imagine Austin corridors, but there was some lengths that changed if you included the full length of what was covered. That was my understanding. We may have missed some roads, but that was, that was when we, when we, when we, when we tried to understand that, that was what we were.
But amenable.
And so, it looks to me, I mean, I'm just trying to look at my map on my phone, which is not very helpful, so I look forward to getting those maps. It's been a long time since I've seen them. But basically, the Imagine, what I hear you saying is the 2016 Bond corridors. It's your understanding that most of those are the same as the Imagine Austin, and so that most of those are, are basically east of Mopac. There are Imagine Austin corridors that are west of Mopac, but there are. Very, very few, just 183, I think, and 71 probably.
If we can reach consensus and, and, and increase roads and even more west of Mopac, you know, that's something that I would, I would support. I think what we're trying to do is, is to find places that will materially move this forward in ways that we can actually get the consensus to, to act. Paige?
I, I do wanna be mindful. I know the five of us who are in a subquorum have had the ability to bat some of these around, and we purposefully built it with folks that we may have not always seen eye to eye so we could actually have those, you know, open conversations and, you know, really look at the maps and figure out what's appropriate. I'm, I'm completely respective and have brought up. I know, for instance, in your district, Councilmember Kitchen, you know, Lamar, to me, is very different than Menchaca. And so, I wanna be sensitive, even though there may be a bus route that services both of those areas. I think the, you know, the actual build-out of what's walkable, what's connected is different. And you and I haven't had a chance to talk about that. And so, we know that there's going to be some areas we need to look at very specifically to make sure that these are indeed the right ones. You know, we just started from, from a place of what makes sense, in my opinion. And I've seen in other communities, you know, your housing and your transportation committees are, are working, they're the same committee. We don't have two separate committees like we have here. We have housing and planning, and then we have mobility. And so, I think the true test of a community that is built to sustain, you know, an increase in affordable housing, market rate affordable housing, and also to support the infrastructure of transportation and to make sure it's got ridership and that people can get out of their cars, is that we're gonna have to look at where is the housing being built? Where is the transportation being built? And so, for us, it made sense to look at corridors in a place of where we have already committed or completed investments in major transportation lines. But obviously, there's some sensitivities, you know, neighborhood by neighborhood, district by district, where we, we realize we've been able to have this conversation and completely understand that there needs to be an opportunity for folks who haven't been having this discussion with us to, to really look at what does that mean for their community and to be able to ask questions and have them answered. So, this is definitely a starting point, but, you know, we've had extensive conversations, like the mayor pro temp said, you know, with our teams, and, and hope to be able to work through just some of these details, knowing that we're all gonna have a different impact of these. And we wanna be mindful of each person's need to, to respond to their community.
Chita, did you wanna speak? Okay, so if you turn out your light, that's what I use to kinda gauge who wants to speak.
Could we then get back to the question?
Could we then get back to the answering those questions about, about the medium and large?
Okay, what was, repeat the question?
So, I'm interested, I'm still unclear on how the larger and the medium. Well, number one, there was also that bigger question about whether we're strictly talking about VMU areas or not, or more generally.
We were talking about corridor properties.
All of these.
And we were talking about corridor properties and the, the, the relaxed compatibility would be associated with affordability programs.
Yeah, and I had, I had questions about the specifics there, but just, but thank you. That's helpful, because again, we got questions last night and also already today about what we're, what we're talking about, what con, what is the context for the compatibility? And so, we were starting to answer.
So, we had talked about some compatibility that would be even without an affordability program. They would still be corridor tracks, but the relaxation in compatibility there was just to increase by five feet the first two categories so that you could get a, a higher floor plate on the first floor. So, going from 30 to 35 and 40 to 45 kinda thing.
So, within the larger and the medium, I had asked you for a couple of specific examples of, of ones that I recall from last time. Do you have a sense of where, whether either of these categories captures exposition, Duval, Enfield, the kinds of places that had 15-minute buses, but, but were not in, in most of the community's minds?
And my understanding, as I read these categories, is they do not include those streets.
And one of the reasons. Even if they have 15-minute bus lines. Even if they have, it's not TPM. And we, one of the reasons that we didn't have it ready today is that we wanted to have a list of streets. And so, we had some of the streets that we knew which Speedway and Duval are not included in those categories. But we wanted to try to have a list that covered more, more of the city than just what we remembered were, were some hot-button streets that we were not, were not clearly corridors for a variety of reasons, such as the level of, of transit that was going down them.
And by way of, the goal in this exercise is to have a different kinda conversation than we've had before. The goal of this exercise, while being mindful that you can have so many exceptions that they swallow the rule, the goal of this exercise is to not get hung up on the same hotly debated and contested properties that we got hung up before so that we're able to move forward.
Yeah, and I think that's, I think that's the appropriate approach for this. For me to understand it, for me to answer questions, though, there has to be a certain correspondence between the details and the larger just so I can start to understand what the impact is of what you're proposing. You know, if, if, if we're just talking about categories without looking at some of the streets that are within that, it's just really challenging to understand how that works.
Anne?
I appreciate that this is thrown out for, you know, for conversation. I also appreciate that, well, okay, what concerns me, and I'll give it some more thought, is that we're not following the categories that we set. We've, we've, we have some categories, and then we're just making some exceptions. So, we'll have to think about that. And what you said, Councilmember Ellis, might make sense, you know, and when we think about the characteristics of the roads. But I, I, you know, I fail to see from, you know, from a, you know, just from a logic standpoint, why we're including all of the 2016 Bond corridors, but we're not including all of the Project Connect things. So, now, there may be reasons for that, but what, what you hear me reacting to is the southern 2016 Bond corridors, the Slaughter and William Cannon, they don't have this kinda bus service, nor are they ever scheduled for it at this point in time. So, I'm not sure why we would include them while we're excluding things that are on the Project Connect list for the future. So, there may be reasons for that that we can think, think through, but I just wanna put on the record here that I am not certain from a, from a policy pers- on the record here that I am not certain from a policy perspective, why those are on the list that way, because it doesn't match what we're trying to accomplish. So I need to have some more conversations about why we would do that.
I look forward to us all collectively trying to help one another coming up with as exhaustive and larger lists we can without running afoul of the political issues that would stop us from being able to do it.
Well, you know, there are political issues in South Austin also.
No, no.
You know, and so.
I'm not arguing with you, I'm saying I would welcome the help and the assistance in coming up with something that was still broad, but took care of the political issues that exist in the city.
Well, and I'm most concerned about, from a policy perspective, getting where we need to get for affordable housing. That's why I brought the V, because that's my number-one priority, is affordable housing along transit quarters. You know, if the feeling is that we need to go beyond the transit quarters, I'm certainly willing to have that conversation, but it's just not looking logical to me at the moment.
Anyone else want to talk on this topic? Yes, Allison and then Kathy.
Thank you, and appreciate your thoughts on this. Anne, I think that that was the 2016 Bond corridors, you know, maybe an area that we have to look at more carefully and benefit from your knowledge and insight on those areas. The challenge we had is that we knew that the Transit Priority Network was too big, and then we couldn't go, you know, when we tried to think about, how do you do this with street characteristics, it became really very complicated. You know, there are some streets, you know, and if we combined the Transit Priority Network and Imagine Austin, then we lost some roads in West Austin where you might want to see some of the growth. And so we were, you know, we had, we were trying to find these broader categories that we already had agreed definitions with to maximize the areas where we could agree on things. And, you know, this is not hard to modify and take out the 2016 Bond corridors, if that is something that has to be done, we can certainly look at that. Again, my understanding was that they overlapped with the Imagine Austin corridors, and there are Imagine Austin corridors that do not have a lot of transit or do not have frequent transit that are included in there. So there was that aspect to it. So I just want to clarify, and again, we, you know, part of the reason we don't have the written-up thing is because we wanted to make sure we had a more thorough list of what was not included in these ideas, but, you know, nobody was presenting these as if there were not going to be other very valuable suggestions from other colleagues who had ideas from other parts of towns or had concerns that needed to be addressed. I also support the notion of the illustration. We're talking, you know, the changes to the compatibility happen only on properties, and the changes to when you can do 60, 65 feet or 90 feet only happen on properties where they're participating in the affordability bonus, which helps us to get more housing around the city. The five-feet bump, though, I think is really important. We have a lot of corridors that have one-story buildings, and by allowing us to get to 45 quicker and 35 quicker, we'll be able to get some of those three- and four-story buildings, which are the stick construction, which we are not seeing now because it's different to go from one story to two-story, but if you can go from one to three or one to four, you'll see more incentives to have the construction. Those can be local developers, you know, the 90-foot construction tends to have to be folks who are from outside of town, and so it creates a little bit more opportunity for that construction to take place. So I know the focus is going to be on when we allow for 60 feet and 90 feet, when it's allowed under the zoning, but that five-feet difference is really just, I think it's really important for adding the density and creating the incentives to have that where we want it, and it matches closer, you know, right now, I think it's below what a house can do in some of those areas.
Okay. Paige and then P.O.
I thought you had called on me. I thought you had said I was next after Allison.
I did, you're right.
And so that brings me to the next area that I needed clarification. If you could please go through all of the numbers again, I know you were just talking about the five-foot bump, but again, like the rollout of all of those details just wasn't something I captured. So could you talk about, now that we have a sense of what the larger and the medium are, can you talk about what your proposal is with regard to compatibility for each of those with, as I understand it, onsite affordable housing at some level? And then the proposal for a corridor without affordable housing?
So what we had talked about was for those that are participating in a bonus program on a corridor, that the, you would get to 65 foot of height at 100-foot distance on the larger corridors. You'd get to 65 height at 100-foot distance, and you would reach 90 feet height at 200-foot distance. Recognizing there are very few zoning categories that allow for 200 feet, so if someone, 90 feet, so if someone wants to get there, they're coming in for a zoning change. For medium-sized corridors, you would get to the 65-feet height at 150 feet? And you would get to 90 feet at 250 feet, 150.
I thought you had said at 100, so I just want to be sure I.
On the larger corridors, 65 feet at 100.
Yeah, I got it at 100, but for medium, it's 65 feet at 150 feet.
Yes, and 90 feet at 250 feet, so it's 50 additional feet. Distance, as you go from larger corridors to medium corridors. Okay? And then there would be some compatibility that would be for properties on corridors, period. And that's going from the 30 to 35, 40 to 45, and 60 to 65. So it's to allow for the, potentially the additional floor, the larger ground floor, ceiling height, or commercial.
Sorry, those are, the additional five feet at every level is, without an affordable housing bonus, just on the corridors.
Correct.
That have been identified in this proposal.
Yes.
Absent of compatibility. This is not, this is outside of the compatibility conversation.
Yes.
So I think one, you know, just.
And then the other two things, Kathy, that Allison had laid out was.
Actually, it's not outside of compatibility, it is, because they can only build what they're allowed to in their zone, so it's allowing, it becomes compatible to do 35 at an earlier point.
Yeah, I guess I meant it's outside of the compatibility proposal in that we're not strictly talking about compatibility or the requirement to have onsite affordable housing.
It's separate from the onsite, but it does have to do with compatibility. It's not changing the amount of height they're allowed, it's changing how high they can, like how, it's changing the compatibility limits as you progress for the distance by five feet.
Okay.
But that's not tied to affordability.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, so if there's not an onsite affordability.
The distance will stay the same, but the height.
The regular compatibility distance levels stay the same with an additional five feet at every level. Okay, thank you.
And then we had talked about having a trigger for compatibility, being properties on the same side of the corridor.
Right, I captured that.
And we had talked about compatibility being triggered by zoning as opposed to use.
Right, thank you for those details, I did get those the first time through. So did you have any conversations in your quorum, and I'm not sure that this is, I'm not sure whether this is true of other areas in the city, but it's certainly true in District Nine, that you have neighborhoods that are bordered by two of these kinds of roads, and so you could get into a situation where there's very little compatibility left within a neighborhood. Did you all address that at any level?
So this only applies to the corridor property, it doesn't apply to anything internal to the corridor, so there's no transition zone where this applies.
I understand that, but if you have, say, the area in North Loop or Heritage, where you have small strips of neighborhoods bordered by two corridors, the distance from the corridor could very well envelope a good deal of the neighborhood. So that you have many of the properties within a neighborhood, really within that. Let me think it through and look at the.
Yeah, I think that's a configuration we should look at, but I think by having it still 100, 150, I think North Loop would be, I don't remember if North Loop's an Imagine Austin corridor.
I think it is.
But it could be that if.
Then it'd be 150 feet.
If they were so close together, they would all be covered by compatibility, because they would be within the 100 or 150 reach or 200-foot reach of one corridor or the other. So it could be just blanketed with compatibility.
Okay.
So we should look at that, and, I mean, I think part of what we have to, you know, do is figure out what are those weird configurations and see how this would play out. We did try to design it so that it.
If we're looking at it wrong.
Yeah, you know, we may be looking at it wrong for a particular area, if it's a strange configuration.
When we were doing this the first go-round, some of those areas were turned into all transition area. And that was one of the objections that came from those areas. But by not engaging in that, I don't think we deal with that challenge. Paige.
That conversation mostly covered, you know, what I was thinking, but I just wanted to make sure it was really clear, you know, to people following along, that this doesn't change anyone's zoning, it's just about when and how, and in what distances and heights they're able to utilize the existing zoning. So this by no way would take a lot that's not zoned, you know, for height, and let them do that without coming through the normal zoning change process and having council deliberate that one in a specific situation.
P.O.
All right, yes, Mayor, now, I was looking at the board here, and it's the medium, and it's a 2016 Bond corridor. So like Airport Boulevard, that would be also included as a medium. And Martin Luther King also considered.
Yes.
I think those are Imagine Austin corridors, too.
Okay.
Yes, Leslie.
And then I just wanted to emphasize the point about the compatibility and the height would only be on the side of the street where the change would be made, it wouldn't reach back, and it wouldn't reach across the street either. So only, so triggers for all properties on the corridors would only allow properties on the same side of the corridor, as opposed to across the street, on the other side of the corridor to trigger compatibility.
If I could just clarify, that's across, like, if you were on the same side of a corridor and across the street and you triggered compatibility, it would still trigger the compatibility, it's across the corridor, it would not.
Right.
So there are situations where you could have a property on a corner with the street, and then there's the corridor, and there could be across the street something that triggers, but just not across the corridor.
Right, this is on, not across corridors.
Right. And then the other element was that the compatibility limit would extend to 300 feet, and that would be the outside range of compatibility restriction.
So from 540 to 300?
Right. And we looked at 540 just to see, well, one, our 540 appears to be a couple hundred feet, several hundred feet, more than any other city we could find in the country. Even at 300 feet, we're still at the farthest limit. But when we looked at the slope lines and the like, 300 feet of football fields length away seem to be there. The compromise number, recognizing that there are a lot of people that are already pushing back against that concept, because it seems way too far for them. So I'm sure that people think, some think too far and some think too close. Anne and then Cheeto. I'm sorry, hang on a second, Paige?
I just wanted to flag that Natasha had her hand raised.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Natasha, let's go to you, you haven't had a chance to speak as much.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and thank you, Councilmember Ellis, for pointing that out. I have a lot of questions, I think everybody has a lot of questions, I think this subject matter, this conversation is interesting, and I really, really look forward to having the written version of this proposal. I think we all know that we need more housing, we need it yesterday. That said, I really am concerned about trying to maximize new affordable housing on those, you know, we have these conversations all the time about environmental justice in District One, on those large roads where air quality is lower and the risk of traffic violence is higher. I appreciate that a couple of my colleagues have sort of pointed out already that even in this first pass, I'm detecting some pretty severe inequitable distribution. I'm also concerned that we are leaving out the possibility of new housing along corridors in some of our more privileged parts of town, just again, at first pass, that's how I'm seeing it. I think we all have a lot of questions, and my concerns are ready, you know, that are being highlighted during the course of this, you know, disjointed, in my opinion, conversation. I think we're doing this backwards, frankly, I think if we had a written version to start with, you know, then we would literally all be on the same page, and I think when it comes to discussing this kind of subject matter, most particularly because, to my colleague's point, not all of us run the dais during the course of these conversations, and to another one of my colleague's points, you know, offering some clarity for those trying to follow along, I got to tell you, without having a document to actually follow along, I think for a lot of people, this is not an easy conversation to follow along with, in which case I don't necessarily see the utility in highlighting and daylighting these questions, issues, what's been worked on already, without actually having a document to work from. Again, I really look forward to seeing that written document, I'm really trying to wrap my mind around all the different maps, you know, that we're all going to need to go and study now. But obviously, you know, like a couple of my colleagues, I'm already concerned, and I'm already feeling like maybe this conversation is happening prematurely. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. We'll try to get something published here fast. Allison, then Anne.
I just wanted to clarify that, you know, one of the reasons that we included Imagine Austin corridors as our definition was so that we could loop in some streets in West Austin, like Medical Parkway, like Jollyville Road, like Lake Austin Boulevard. So there are streets that are in West Austin as well, and again, we are, we were, we aren't able to pick and choose streets, and we used to use categories, and the more expansive category of the TPN did not work for most districts, so that was how we landed on Imagine Austin corridors.
Anne.
I think, oh, did Councilmember Harper-Madison, did you have your hand raised again?
I did, Councilmember Kitchen, but along the lines of what I was encouraging everybody to do earlier, I'll wait until I'm recognized by the Chair, thank you.
Okay. All right, I wanted to talk about some other aspects, and I wanted to say, I see a lot of very, very positive ideas here, I want to emphasize that. For example, the not triggering compatibility if you're off the street, I think that that's a, that's very, very important to do, that's really, you know, one of the low-hanging fruit that we absolutely must do. I think the consideration for the distances make a lot of sense to me, I think they build off of what a lot of previous work that was done by the working group and others under the previous LDC, so I think that that's really important. Appreciate what you were saying about the, you know, the additional height, that's, you know, the additional five feet, I think it was, I think that's helpful. So I think there's a lot. So I, I think, I think there's a lot here. I'm also interested in, it sounds like something y'all are still working on, but it'll be interesting to see what all we're thinking about in terms of, I think you said other things like what could be built in the setback, if that's what, I'm not remembering all the details, but, but basically there's some other design issues that could be useful to look at that relate to noise and light and, um, you know, vegetative buffers and trees and things like that, that I think, um, sounds like y'all are talking through that. I think that would be helpful to consider also because I think that that's a, a part of what's important. And then I don't know if y'all have considered this, but, um, but I think we'll also need to, to look at the things like rear setbacks and side setbacks, although I'm, I'm not quite sure, but I, I think maybe you're not changing those because there are some places in the city where, where you have, and some of this is what Councilmember Tovo mentioned, but where you have lots that are sort of wrapped around. So that may be next to the corridor, so we're gonna have to think about the impact on that, so. So anyway, I did want to say that I appreciate the work that's been done. I think this is good conversation. I do want to say that I, I really do want us to get, to move forward with the VMU. So Mayor, the way you laid that out as moving forward with VMU and then, and then initiating other actions may be the, the best way to do it. We've been working on the additional affordable housing piece of VMU for quite some time now and I really am hoping that we don't slow down that aspect. But the way you, the way you laid it out worked well. So I don't want to spend a lot of time speaking on that. I've talked about that before. I've posted it for Thursday, so you all know that that's there. One of the key things I need feedback on is the levels that we're proposing for affordability because they're, they're a bit more aggressive than, than what staff brought forward and if, if, if we can, I'd be, I would like to do that. So we set, for rental, we set a minimum of fifteen percent reserved as affordable if you're setting it at sixty percent MFI. And we also set a minimum of twelve percent if you're setting it at fifty percent MFI. So those are, that, that's an area we need to talk about. And so I just invite people to think about that and, and, and hopefully, and would like us to be as, you know, as aggressive as we, as we can in terms of getting the affordability. So that's one of the things I bring to your attention. The other question I have that I think relates to V also is, is I think what Councilmember Ellis mentioned, and that was that, that what we're do, what we're talking about with these changes, the changes you all mentioned in V also, is that we're not making the zoning changes. So if, if a property's not zoned in, in the ways that you all are talking about for the height that you all are talking about, that that would have to go through the zoning process. So that makes sense to me also. So, thank you.
Mayor.
Leslie.
Thanks, and I wanted to especially thank folks who were not, we weren't able to talk with in the crafting of this draft proposal for pointing out that their specific knowledge and familiarity of their individual districts is really at play here. And I think all of us should, should rely on our colleagues for that specific information on situations in their districts. And if we can all start at that point, then we should have a good connection with our communities and we should have a really good product at the end. And so, for example, Councilmember Kitchen, your conversations about Slaughter and Mancheck and William Cannon, for example, that's really good information. We need to bring that back to the larger conversation. And I can talk about issues in, in District Seven in specifics. We have a lot of the major corridors and Project Connect corridors in District Seven and a TODD even. So there's a lot of things happening in my district that I'm able to, because I represent that area, I, I'm there all the time, I can bring that level of familiarity to all of you all and rely on you to bring back what you know. Councilmember Ellis about District Eight, you know, and, and Councilmember Harper Madison on District One, and that's really, that will inform our final product. And I would like to suggest that maybe that's where we all start, is we look at, at home, essentially, at the things that are happening in our districts and then bring that information back to the larger convening so that we can have the kind of document that will be something that the entire city will be proud of and support because I think that is our goal here, is to bring something where, where we can all be supportive at this point in time, knowing that things will also occur five, ten years from now and, and people, other people will be coming back and making some adjustments and amendments to the work that we will complete here, hopefully, this year. So this is a never-ending project, but it will have our imprint on it at this point. And I, I want to invest my work with the knowledge and familiarity that each of you have in your individual districts and, and support that work.
Anyone else on this before we move on? Yes, Cheeto.
We haven't really talked about parking. And that's, I think, an important piece of, of providing additional housing, you know, basically, you know, get rid of some parking spaces and allow for more housing. Where is this proposal in terms of parking changes?
Yes, and, and frankly, the, the, the group of us have, have kind of got to a closer point, but not quite to the point we were ready to put a number in a document. But we will have a number in a document and what we'll post here quickly, just as a place to, to start that conversation. But it would probably be cast in terms of a, a reduction in what would otherwise be parking for lots on corridors for both the larger corridor and then a reduction for the medium corridor. It will also contain provisions that say, um, exceptions near schools so as to potentially provide for that. It may suggest certain TVM requirements in order to be able to take advantage of that.
And with regard to the schools, why would we want more parking, I guess, around schools as opposed to, is, is that what the proposal, if, if I understand it correctly, that there would not be parking reductions around schools? Or is it the other way, that there would be additional parking reductions around schools?
It would be that there would not be the parking reductions close to the schools because it creates havoc for our older schools throughout our city who were not built with expansive parking and were not built with the ability to maneuver around the schools. This was an issue that came up over and over again when we were doing Codex and when we were doing the land development code, that there were some serious potential knock-ons to the school areas. This is only for school, you know, schools that are within a certain number of feet from the corridor would trigger that.
Okay, I, I, I need to, you know, wrap my head around that a, a, a little bit more, but.
And, and part of that for me, Cheeto, is having gone through this process before, I think that there are, there are disagreements with respect to what is actually safer or not safer for children in terms of street parking and the like. And I think that's, that's a really important conversation to have. But our community is pretty deeply divided on that. And, and we can either try to resolve that deeply divided issue as part of this process, in which case you'll find that it will be all that you're talking about for two or three months. Or we can say, we're just not gonna have that conversation here. We're gonna pass everything we can pass now. And then those other topics can be addressed at some point in the future. But this exercise is about trying to get as much done as we can get done to not let the, the perfect be the enemy of the good. These things are, I think we agree conceptually to a lot of this. It gets really hard when you start actually writing it down in specifics. We're all gonna have to deal with that. But I for one would like to be at a place in September where we can say to you future councils, we were at least able to do this and this is a significant advancement and we can get this done. Doesn't have us in court for two years. People can start applying this now. Let's go ahead and do that. And then if you want to have the future harder conversations that are more divisive in the community, that's a different process than what we're trying to set up here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Hello, um, thank you for acknowledging me. I'm sitting here and I'm just, I'm getting feedback already from the community that as a whole, they're, they're upset that they, they didn't get a heads-up on what's going on. And as a council member who, who really doesn't know the specifics, I just want to express that it could be a little frustrating for me and some of the other colleagues when we don't have all the information in front of us. And my biggest concern, I think, is just like what Councilmember Harper Madison had said once, where she said you can't put the toothpaste back into the tube once you squeeze it out. And so I want to make sure that when we're having these discussions in the community that we have all the information laid out in front of us. And I know that you do plan on posting this later today, so I really appreciate that. I think in the future, out of respect for all of us as a whole, it might be better to post it ahead of the meeting so that we can all be on the same page and have a really productive discussion about what's going on here. Because the notes that I'm taking about what our colleagues are saying, there's a lot of questions and unknowns, and I just want to make it clear that I would have felt a lot better walking into the work session today having that information ahead of time. So thank you.
And it'll, it'll be on the agenda for us to be, it'll be posted today. We have it set on our agenda on Thursday to talk. And we could have said nothing about it today, but we thought at the very least we would, we would raise it today so that people would know that it was coming. I didn't know we would be going into this level of extent of conversation, but, but happy to have done that. And I would, you know, point out to the community generally that I'm not sure over the last six to eight years, there's any topic we have discussed as much as this topic over a six to eight-year period of time. Nothing really new in anything that we've talked about today. We've seen real similar proposals from different working groups, from different consultants, from different planning commissions, from different ZAP discussions. I mean, we, we've, we've talked about this up one side and down the other for a really long period of time. And, and we're not talking about passing an ordinance other than VMU, which has gone through the process, until the fall. But to, to set up a process to engage the conver, the community more on a specific kind of proposal, but, and we've talked since at least November about getting to this point and we've been following kind of that schedule that we laid out in November to be able to air these issues. But to your point, uh, McKenzie, I mean, I think you're right. You know, this is, this is something that we want the community to, to, to understand and be part of the conversation. And, and we'll post something to, today, just as quickly as we possibly can to, to, to help with that conversation.
Mayor.
Yes, P.O.
And to let my colleagues know that we've been discussing this for sixteen years. I mean, so, uh, in county, so just want to let you know that this has been a long, long process. I remember my wife being on Project, on Imagine Austin and serving four years, and that was before I even got elected. And we had over sixteen thousand people participating in that process. So this has been studied and the, the people in the court spoke up that we didn't do it the right way. So this is an opportunity to get something because we desperately need something. I'm losing all my, my friends and they're all having to move out. It's, it's, there is no place in Austin that is very, it's affordable. I mean, our kids are having to move out, out of the city. And so that's very alarming to me that we can't provide affordable and decent housing. So this is an opportunity, especially along our corridors because of how expensive it is in Austin, that we're gonna have to have reasonable, affordable transportation to get back and forth. So that's what's been going on.
Okay. Anything else before we move on? Cheeto and then Kathy.
And on that, on that note from Councilmember Renteria, in kind of researching and talking to, to different members of the community, builders included, about the, you know, VMU type construction, that kind of four-story, five-story, kind of six-story type of construction that we do, that is the, you know, dollar per square foot, the cheapest housing we can build. You know, when you have your kind of first-floor concrete pedestal with your, you know, four to, you know, five stories of wood frame apartment building on a dollar per square foot basis for construction, there's no way that we get cheaper than that. Of course, including land costs, you've got to factor in land costs, of course. So it's, it's, to me, just critically important that we foster that type of, of construction and that we do it in as broad of a manner as we possibly can. You know, we, we, again, just with the rental statistics, there was a, a, a good article, I think it was in The Statesman, on basically rental fraud now that is happening, where people are kind of tricking other, you know, who are so desperate for apartments that, you know, they're putting like a deposit or they're doing something and the person is just, it's a complete fraud. It's a, it's a bait and switch or just a, a theft, really. So i- it's, I, i- that housing along the corridors ultimately, I mean, that is working-class housing. That is the cheapest housing that we can build in Austin today. And we, we need to, we need to move that forward as, as soon as we possibly can.
Kathy.
I have, no, two quick, two quick, very quick questions. I just wanted to understand who the proposal is coming from. I caught you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, Councilmember Ellis, Councilmember Poole.
Councilmember Fuentes.
Councilmember Fuentes, thank you. And then my second question is now, Councilmember Vella. I didn't, could you tell, I haven't heard about the rental fraud you were describing, but I didn't, I couldn't completely follow what you were saying. So they put, would you talk, would you just take a few seconds and explain that?
Yeah, I think that people are so desperate for, to find an apartment because there's, you know, waiting lists and things like that, that there is kind of a fraud, a scam basically has developed around where people are offering and signing fake contracts, you know, to, to, you know, rent somebody an apartment that they have no authority to rent, that they have no, uh, so, I mean, again, that's just an indication of, you know, how desperate people are that, you know, they're willing to kind of, you know, give somebody two thousand dollars as a deposit and it's a, and it's a complete fraud.
Thank you, I hadn't heard about that. Thank you for explaining.
Okay. Anybody else? Good guy.